I would like to call the Fairfield County. I would like to call the Fairfield County Council regular meeting to order, Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, six o'clock P. M. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second that the agenda be approved. Any discussion? All in favor, let it known by I.
Aye.
Poses nay. Let the record show. Before we get an invocation, Mr. Trap, I wanted Council to know that he's not feeling good tonight, and that's why he's not here. We have invocation by Councilman Douglas Paul.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for everyone that's here tonight. Lord, that we pray we make decisions that is in the best interest of Fairfield County and is pleasing to you. Amen.
Amen.
Can we get approval of the minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, let it known by I.
Aye.
Poses nay. Let the record show, six zero. Public presentation is non. Number six, first public comment. Do we have anybody, Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Yes, Mr. Randy Bright signed up to speak about the county administration update and the hospital.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Couple of things I want to say. First, on the, on the hospital, just a minor point, but it's, we need to get it right because I myself, as an ex-hospital board member, have had questions about it. Every time people see the proposed hospital and property sale, people think, oh, are we selling the hospital? Well, I don't know of any hospital that the county still owns, and I think to eliminate confusion in the future, if we have this item on the agenda, you might say former hospital property or doctor's office property or whatever, but please don't describe it as a hospital property because it's not. The next issue is certainly much more concerning, and that's the hiring of the administrator. One would hope that in this hiring, we would be much more transparent than we have been in the past. Let us know exactly what you're doing and keep us abreast so that we can judge how the process fits the requirements of normal protocols in such a serious hire. The one thing I've seen is we've reached out and picked some RFPs from Perspective Recruiting Services. What's the update on that? I realize you can't release those that are in the running, but what's the update on that? What are your, what are, what are the qualifications that you're looking for in an administrator? Have you made that public? There's a lot, a lot of online material in other counties when they, when they publicize a need for that position. They publicize the exact qualities that they're looking for so that any potential interviewees can understand how their talents would match up. And they can literally sell, or maybe they say, hey, that position is not for me. But don't make it a secret what you're looking for. If you make it a secret, then you're going to run away perhaps a lot of talented people, and you're going to disappoint the citizens in thinking that you're not being transparent. So be open how the processes are going, what the process is going to do, who's going to make the final decisions, and most importantly, publicize the qualities that you're looking for. Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing section.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. We're down, we're now down to item seven, public hearing, item A, third and final reading orders, number seven, seven, four, to make a supplemental appropriation of seventy-five thousand for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, through as to authorize funding for the position of project manager within economic. I want to open this public hearing at six oh five. Ms. Roberts, do we have anybody?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Mr. Randy Bright signed up to speak.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Several issues that I have concerning this, and most of them involve how we got there. And are we going to learn from our lessons of the past? So how we got here for this discussion today on this position is, number one, let's remember the lesson, good people leave bad bosses. And let's remember that it looked like we went all out to validate that old adage as six of our top employees in the county have left our employ in just this year, in the, most of them just in the last several months. Let's remember that lesson as we, with all of our employees, but as we approach this. The next lesson, and it also had something to do with, I'm certain, why we're still looking for this employee. We cut the budget by economic development over the previous year by ninety-three thousand dollars. If you recall, a few years ago, it was recommended by a consultant, hey, you guys need to beef up your economic development, hire another person. We did, and we boomed. We set an all-time record low unemployment rate. We created an atmosphere where we're going to get ten million plus dollars rolling in over the years, an extra investment, extra taxes, additional economic stimulus, and economic velocity, and other socioeconomic things. It worked, it really worked. But we cut the budget by ninety-three thousand dollars in the middle of a COVID recovery. Another lesson we've got to learn and not repeat. It also speaks to the general budget problems. We looked at cutting essentials like economic development, yet overlooked the non-essentials like the highest budget for our size in council budget, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in the council budget for this tiny county that's still losing population. And again, I have concerns about the hiring process in this. Will we file the right protocols, or will we revert to good old boy cronyism and not hire the right person? The decision is yours, lots of lessons to learn going forward. I do like the reversal of the decision, but how we got here is just a horrible, horrible management, mismanagement of our county. Thank you.
Public hearings are concluded, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let the record show the public hearing. We only had one speaker. Public hearing is closed at six oh eight P. M. We're down now to item eight, ordinance resolution and orders, third and final reading of orders, number seven, seventy-four, to make a supplemental appropriation of seventy-five thousand for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, through as to authorize funding for the position of project manager within the Economic Development Department. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
Does the record show Mr. Paul had voted nay? Orders and committed and commissioned minutes, we had some from the Fairfield Chamber of Commerce, we used as information. Item ten, non, eleven, non, twelve, non. We're down now to the county administrator report, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, council. Our first item tonight is just for information. The Sheriff's Office will be sponsoring a law enforcement community outreach event. It'll be held on September twenty-fifth at Dryer Park, and it'll be from ten A. M. to two P. M. Along with the assistance of Serve and Connect, Love Never Fails, Fairfield County Recreation, Andre Jones, and the Winsboro Department of Public Safety, the Sheriff's Office will be providing free hot dogs, drinks, and chips. There'll be several bounce houses, basketball, soccer games, a dunking booth, and an ice cream truck. And they've also invited about fifteen other local agencies to participate, be handing out literature and all kind of information about services available. Fairfield Medical will also be available to give COVID vaccines and conduct blood pressure checks. We're happy to say that our animal control department will be there, giving out free rabies vaccinations, as well as some dog food. Behavior Health will also be there to take any unwanted prescription medications that need to be destroyed. And I think we have some other county departments also that's planning ongoing, but I just wanted to make that announcement and give everybody that information.
Do we have any comments, question from council? Again, we certainly look forward to this, this event, so let's please publicize it as much as, I think we're going to go ahead and put this on our website.
Okay, the next area is administration building update, and council had directed us to evaluate the current condition of our administration building. This was last done in September of twenty thirteen, and some of the recommendations from that were actually done, but however, we feel it's important to see how the conditions have changed since then. So our goal is to have this completed and ready for information by October the first. So I just wanted to give y'all an update on that.
Again, one of the things, just council information and also the public is, the sheriff came, I guess about a, maybe a month or so ago, and, and talked about some of the safety issues with the new administration building. So one of the things, so some of the question we've asked is to make sure we know what we're getting into, make sure we have all the answers, what this building going to cost us if the sheriff department stay, and what it's going to cost us if he don't stay. So we looking at all those aspects before we make a decision. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to provide a brief update from our emergency management department as far as COVID goes, and just kind of what we've been working on in the spring of twenty twenty-one, emergency management partner with Fairfield Medical to conduct the drive-through vaccine site at the former hospital. The site was continued on a weekly basis for approximately two months. After the two months, the vaccine site was discontinued because the public demand just decreased, and the availability of vaccines started filtering throughout the county. During the spring of twenty twenty-one, grant became available to support vaccine sites, and our emergency management department applied for this non-matching grant and was awarded sixty-six hundred and ninety dollars to be used for supplies and equipment to support vaccine sites. We've since purchased equipment supplies, and we'll be able to host or, or support any future vaccination sites that if, if the state or anybody asks us to participate in, we'll be able to do that much better. We continue to monitor, monitor the availability of the vaccines in the county and at our local pharmacies and doctors' offices to ensure there's an adequate supply of them for any citizens of the county who want to get vaccinated. To date, approximately fifty-seven percent of the county's population, twelve years and older, have had at least one dose of the vaccine, and that's about right where the state rate is at fifty-seven point nine percent.
So. Any comments, question from council?
I will. Don't you think because of the, the rise in the Delta virus, that we probably need to set up a site again for testing? Because there's a lot of people that's looking for somewhere to be tested, and CBS, you got to get appointments and things like that, so I would.
We'll be glad to take a look at that.
Yeah, take a look at that if you would.
Yep, sure will.
Can we also take a look at homebound and how we're going to deal with that in terms of emergency management?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Do we know how many cases we've had in Fairfield County of COVID-nineteen recently?
I did not look at it today, if any, no.
Could, could we send that information out to council?
Sure, yeah.
You can, Douglas.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Anybody else? Okay, next we have Mr. Jim Stranziger from the Office of Regulatory Staff, and he is a broadband coordinator, and he's going to speak to us tonight about broadband in Fairfield County.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the invitation to be here. Members of county council, it's a pleasure to be here. And I work for a state agency called the South Carolina Office of Regulatory Staff in Columbia, and I'm the director of the broadband office for the state of South Carolina. So I am in charge of making sure that everybody gets connected to the internet, and I'm sure you all would like to see how we're going to get that done here in Fairfield County. I'd also like to introduce Casey. Actually, we brought some handouts for members of council and, and staff. Yes, please.
Thank you.
And we're also, Casey's my colleague, and also my other colleague, Mike Herzberger, the deputy director of the broadband office is here. We're also going to talk to you about the ability to get devices for your telephone for hearing and speech impaired individuals in the county. So Casey's the expert on that, and she'll, she'll catch you up on that. Great, does everybody have a handout? I think everybody. If, if you could please take me to the first slide in the deck or the next, next slide. One of the things I wanted to show everyone is this is a map of Fairfield County, and this is a map of the internet availability in Fairfield County as of July first, twenty twenty-one. So one of the things that my office is tasked with doing is keeping an accurate map, and the way I would teach you to read this map, it's actually pretty simple. The green areas on the map are already served areas. The white areas on the map are places where nobody lives, and the, what I would ask you to draw your attention to is what we call the freckles on the map. So if you simply look at the dark red and dark orange areas on the map, those are the places in Fairfield County where the most number of residents are, where the internet's not very good. And so as a council member, you would want to target those areas to make sure you get them connected as rapidly as possible. So I'm happy to show you the next slide, if you would. So we recently were tasked by the South Carolina General Assembly to collaborate with the South Carolina Department of Commerce and make an investment of state money to the tune of thirty million dollars, and we awarded those grants on July fifteenth, so just about two months ago today. If you pay attention to this slide, I'll draw your attention to the yellow areas on the map. These are places where we've invested state money, and the blue areas on the map are where federal investment is also coming into Fairfield County. So you can see there's quite a bit of investment coming in Fairfield County. It's a good story. And, and then if you could flip to the next slide, please. Thank you so much. This slide reflects, you'll notice the date on this particular slide is October thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. So this is the future version of Fairfield County, showing you where connectivity is going to be in about eighteen months. So all of our grant awards were done with that period of construction time. I will tell you, there's actually some more stuff that's going to be happening in Fairfield County. I don't have that mapped yet, but just a couple of weeks ago, local provider True Vista was awarded a grant from the U. S. Department of Agriculture. That is not reflected into this map yet, but it will actually serve some of the areas that do not have internet. So from an internet perspective, I'm pleased to share with members of county council that there's a lot of work going to be happening in Fairfield County in the next eighteen months, and I hope your residents will be pretty happy with that. There are some numbers in the lower right-hand corner of the slide. I'll draw your attention to that. That shows you, and I don't, I don't even have a copy with me, I should be reading off of it, but that shows you the number of residents and the number of housing units. So I believe it's roughly a little over three thousand residents that currently do not have service, and close to two thousand homes, housing units that do not have service. And then I show you the numbers that are being invested. So on that, could somebody shout out the number in the investment column? I'm, I should have a handout.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred, so that's the improvement. So based on the investment, it'll be one thousand six hundred residents having service over the next eighteen months, and roughly nine hundred homes, was that what?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-sixty-four. And so the remaining balance is, is what's left to be done in Fairfield County. So I'm here to tell you, we're nowhere close to done. Thank you for the, I should have brought a handout. But we're nowhere close to done in Fairfield County. The mission is to turn the whole county green and have all your residents have service. But I will say, we're off to a really good start. So thank you much. Any questions on the broadband piece? I would like to turn it over to my colleague for, yes, sir.
Yes, one of the things, Mr. Davenport and I, I think what did was the winds of blast. One of the things, we was riding around looking at some economic development kind of stuff, okay?
Yep.
And looking at some water lines. One of the things we've talked about is make sure you dig once. And so one of the things we want to be able to talk about, and I mentioned to him at the time, is how do you take that, once we do that? How do we take that and make sure we put lines in that ground at the same time? So we can, we can do that. So that's a further discussion. And I want to thank you for all the time you've given me, I guess, back and forth than everything else. But appreciate all the work you've been doing and trying to help.
Well, Mr. Bell, you're exactly right. And for those of you that have talked about it nationally, it's called, it's a best practice called dig once. And simply stated, if you're going to dig up a street, you might as well fix as many things as you can at the same time. One of the biggest costs for installing internet is digging up the ground and putting internet in underground. If the trench is already open, you might as well fix it at the same time. So what Mr. Bell's referring to, you can actually put conduit in the trench when you have the road. So a best practice for Fairfield County, we would love to see you embrace this, Mr. Administrator, for sure, is anytime you are improving water and sewer service is to think about how you might also improve broadband at the same time. This also applies to anytime you might build a new water tower. There are ways to deploy internet and not just residential internet, but you can improve cell phone service. So one of the fundamental ways to improve cell phone service is using the county's, what are called vertical assets. Water towers, telecom towers and things like that. So anytime, anytime you're looking at those kinds of things. And by the way, that's what the South Carolina Office of Regulatory Staff, that's what the broadband office is all about. We're here to help. So as you have these challenges coming up in the community, my whole team, we're all here to help you navigate this path because it does get complicated and it is really expensive. So, yes, sir.
Does this help with only the current provider? Or does it allow other providers to come in and establish services?
That's a great question. So one of the great, I think, as you all know, the county received American Rescue Plan dollars. The county is allowed to, eligible expenses are water and sewer, but other eligible expenses are also broadband. And one of the things you can do is the county could own that conduit, right? And then you could lease it out to a broadband provider. So it's actually a great strategy. We call that carrier neutral infrastructure. So that the county will own the conduit long term and you can make it available to a carrier of your choosing. It's a great way to manage long term competition and let the county put its best foot forward. Yes, sir. Anything else?
Any more questions, council?
Very quickly, I'll turn the podium over to my colleague Casey to tell you a little bit about equipment distribution.
I'm a little shorter, so, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Sims and I am also from the Office of Regulatory Staff. And I'm going to talk about our equipment distribution program, if you want to hit the next slide. So the South Carolina Equipment Distribution Program is a program that the Office of Regulatory Staff administers. And basically, we oversee this program. And what it does is provides anyone who lives in the state of South Carolina that has a hearing or speech challenge with equipment to communicate at no cost. So if you want to go to the next slide, thank you. So what we do is we provide, like I said, phone equipment for hearing and speech challenge. So to get equipment from our program, the individual would have to live in the state of South Carolina, have a hearing or speech difficulty that they live with, and then have active phone service. If the individual met all of those requirements, they could get communication equipment at no cost to them. And the steps to get that equipment is pretty simple. So I'll walk through those pretty quickly for you. So step one would be to choose a product. We have all different types of products, all relating to communication, as I mentioned. So as you know, especially during the pandemic, communication is so important, especially being able to communicate over the phone. Especially when people are shut in their homes, it really does affect your quality of life. So now more than ever, it is so important to be able to communicate. So the first step would be to choose a product. We have amplified phones, we have captioning phones, we have alerting devices. This would be to help you, to help notify you if your phone is ringing or your doorbell is ringing. And then we also have an iPad that we distribute. So you choose your product, you fill out an application and it's just one page. So it's not a lengthy application process. Fill out the application, have your doctor or audiologist sign it, basically certifying the hearing loss or speech difficulty. And then you send it into our office with a copy of your South Carolina ID and a copy of your current phone bill. Once we have all of that, we process the application and ship you or the individual the equipment that they have selected. So if you go to the next slide, we have, as I mentioned, a variety of options. We have amplified phones, we have captioning phones. And just, just so you know, a captioning phone types out the conversation. So an individual who can't rely on their hearing as well as someone else, they can read the words as well. So we have captioning, amplified. We also distribute electro larynxes. Those are very expensive devices for laryngectomy patients. And then we also have phone equipment that works with cell phone service and phone equipment that works with landline service. So if you or someone you know has trouble hearing on the phone and is in need of an amplified phone and they don't have landline service, we still have equipment that could benefit them. So we do have a lot of options and something for everyone, I like to say. Next slide, please. Here is a picture of our application. We have two different kinds of applications. One is for all of our phone equipment. And then we have an application for our iPad that we distribute. One cool thing that I will tell you about our iPad that we distribute is it serves as a communication device for someone who's lost their voice. So, and like I said, well, first of all, this is no cost. So that's one really great benefit. But if you think about how important it is to communicate and how devastating it would be if you were unable to speak to someone, it's really life changing to get a device like that. So we offer all of those. We also offer free installments and training of all of our equipment as well. So if you receive a device or someone you know receives a device and they're very uncomfortable setting it up or just learning how to use it, we have a really great installer that'll go out and teach the individual how to use it and then also hook it up for them. And so those are just pictures of our applications, what they look like. And then our ending slide, you can go to the last one. It's our contact information. We have a website. Our applications are also available online. One device per household, I think I did say that, but it's one alerting device per household and one phone per household. And then you get to keep the equipment as long as you need it and remain in the state of South Carolina. Are there any questions for me? I know that was a lot of information really quickly, so.
Any questions? And again, I want to thank you for coming up here to tell us about these, these devices and all of this. Because one of the things, I was excited to hear about them.
Yeah.
Because we have, we may have a lot of people in our communities that need these kinds of services, these kinds of devices. One of the things I do, you know, to be somewhat transparent, I know my sister in law, she's using one of your devices, the iPad. And this stuff is needed. And if, if we know of anyone, we're going to put this information on our website. And I see we have the press here. And I'm hoping that somehow we communicate this so people can understand that this, this service is out there so people can use it, okay?
Thank you so much. And I will add one, one last parting note. Your schools and your community, it's a really great resource to share with them. I know speech language pathologists that work in the school system, a lot of them will get devices from our program for their speech challenged students. The good thing about getting an iPad from our program is that the student doesn't have to turn it in at the end of the school year. They can keep it and that way they're not regressing, they are progressing all summer long. So just keep that in mind if you do have a school in your community, high school, middle school, elementary school. And I do have applications as well that I did bring just as a resource if anybody wants one or if you want me to leave those with anybody here.
Could you leave some of those with our clerk to council, please?
Sure.
Ms. Roberts.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Gregory Sprouse with the Central Midlands Council of Government. He's the Director of Research Planning and Development. And he's going to give us a preliminary 2020 census data report.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Gregory Sprouse and I'm with Central Midlands Council of Governments. And if you're not familiar with our agency, we're a regional planning agency that serves the four county area around Columbia, which includes Richland, Lexington, Fairfield and Newberry Counties. And we're one of 10 regional planning agencies across the state that provide support and advocacy and technical planning assistance to local governments in all counties. So as you're probably aware by now, some of the preliminary 2020 census numbers have been released by the Census Bureau. And more is expected to come out over the next several months. So I was asked to come here tonight and just to present to you some of those 2020 population numbers and particularly focused on the Central Midlands region. So what's been released so far is the first data package, which is really intended for redistricting purposes. This was officially released on August 12th and included the official 2020 population numbers and some summary demographic characteristics such as age, race and gender. Initially, it was not readily accessible to the public below the county level. But over the last month or so, since it's been released, a lot more entities and organizations have been digging into the data and making it accessible to the public, including our organization just in pulling the table data down and trying to look at it and how it impacts our region. For South Carolina, the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office has established the South Carolina Census Data Center, which includes a web portal for accessing all 2020 census data. So it's a fantastic website and they have a lot of information already up there. And as more and more census data is released, we expect that they'll be putting it up there as well. So the one last thing I'll say about this data package is the final redistricting data toolkit, which will include more of the information that'll go towards the folks working on redistricting. But it will also include the online data explorer tool is scheduled to be released by the Census Bureau this week on September 16th. So sometime really soon, there'll be a lot of that, the more information will be released. So what are the trends that we are seeing here in the Midlands region and in South Carolina? At the state level, South Carolina gained almost half a million people over the last decade, which equates to about a 10.7% population change and a 2020 population number of just over 5 million people. Within South Carolina, and you can pull this table down from the website that I was mentioning, where you can actually sort by percent change. You can sort on the counties with the highest population numbers. So I'm just going to kind of go through on a state level. The top five counties that have experienced the highest growth rates are Ori, Berkeley, Lancaster, York and Dorchester, ranging from about 30 to 18% change. And then, of course, in the next five, you have Charleston, Greenville, Jasper, Spartanburg and Beaufort. The Lexington is around number 11 with about 12% growth. They added about 31,600 people. Richland is number 14, eight to, around 8.2% growth, but also added 31,643 people. Newberry is number 21, at 0.5%, 6% adding 211 people. And Fairfield is number 43, actually showing a negative 12.5% decline in population, losing about 3,000 people. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. In terms of size, though, based on the 2020 population, Richland is actually the second largest county in the state. Lexington is the sixth, Newberry is the 27th and Fairfield is the 38th. But what's interesting, when you look at, at this map that's up there, what this does is it compares the, the change but between the 2000 and the 2010 census on the one side and then the 2010 and the 2020 census on the other. And what it's showing you is that Fairfield County is not alone in losing population and that we, we're actually seeing a lot less growth and, and more negative growth throughout the state in this last decade than we did in the previous decade. Newberry had about a 3.8% change in 2010 and a 5.5% change in 2020 with that, like I mentioned, just a growth over just about 200 people. Fairfield showed a 2.1% positive change from 2000 to 2010. And then, as I mentioned, the 12.5 negative, percent negative change in 2020.
Excuse me, repeat that number again. It gained 20, 2000 to 2010.
2.1% positive change. And then this last decade, negative 12.5%. And so that was a loss of about 3,000 people. So when you, if you go to the next slide, we've, we've taken this, a look at this at, at the sub county level. It's been a little difficult to do this so far. But we, what we do is basically aggregate up from census tracts into what we call planning sectors. So it allows us to look at the, the change between 2010 and, and 2020 at the sub county level throughout the four county area. And so across the four counties, it's, it's really what we expect when we look at, at growth and development trends. The high areas of highest growth are centered around the town of Lexington, Northwest Richland, Northeast Richland, around, around Blythewood. And then the rural counties and the rural areas of Richland, Lexington, we're seeing a lot slower growth and negative growth in a lot of areas. So it's, it's definitely interesting to look at that. And as we, as more and more data comes out, we'll be able to start looking at some of the other demographic characteristics at the sub county level. But let's see, I think on the next slide, we start, I pulled the data just on the surrounding counties so that you could, you could take a look at how Fairfield County fares with the other counties. And I do have that. So again, we're looking at that, the 2.14% change versus the, the negative change that we're seeing here. And, and it really is interesting when you look at the, the high growth rates in the surrounding counties that, that are really showing a lot of spillover from the, the development around the Charlotte area, particularly in Lancaster County. And then when you look at Chester and Union County, it's a lot more comparable to what we're seeing here in Fairfield. On the next slide, I just pulled the data for the, for the jurisdictions within Fairfield County. So you have Fairfield County as a whole at the top of that table. And then Fairfield County, just the unincorporated portions. And then by Jenkinsville, Ridgeway and Winsboro. And so just about every, every jurisdiction within Fairfield County is showing some of that population loss.
But the greatest reduction loss was, was that Ridgeway?
Yeah, it looks like just in terms of the, that change. And we, we can actually pull this at the Census County Division too, which will, which will aggregate up a little bit from the municipalities, but still give you an idea of where the change is within the county. So that's all, we just wanted to kind of present that data and we'll be happy to, to come back and talk a little bit more once more the, the additional data starts coming out from the Census Bureau.
Ms. Sprouse, one of the things, as you know, when we talked about the data at the car, one of the things that began to alarm me is the amount, is to see the population that just declined. And all of a sudden, like you said, by 3,000 people from 2010 to 2020, which is, which is significant. And 12.5% decrease. So it, it really speaks to us and says, I guess, if, if you sort of look at it, and again, this is just my opinion. But if you sort of look at it. But if you sort of look at it. What we've been doing haven't seemed to be working. And, and we gotta do something to try to help build these communities. And so we don't continue to lose population. One of the things, I guess I told you coming in, one of the things, the guy from Kershaw kind of sent me the paper, Chairman. And he's just bragging, it looked like every county around us grew in population except us. Thank you, and you can't do nothing about that, but you did tell me that you would be willing to try to help us think through it. And so that we can see what we're doing and what we're not doing and see how we do that.
Yeah, and I think that, as y'all have talked about before, Fairfield County does have a lot of geographic advantages. And I think one of the things to, to focus on is the fact that a lot of the, the highest growth in the state is on both sides of Fairfield County. So definitely positions the county well to be able to potentially absorb some of that growth in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Felicia Kilgore. Who's the South Carolina Housing Trust Fund Manager with the South Carolina Housing Authority. And she's here to share some information for us on home repair assistance programs.
Definitely want to give thanks to Chairman Bell for reaching out to me a couple of weeks ago or so. To talk about our. Home repair program. Not only do we administer our home repair program, but we also administer a lot of other programs to support affordable housing. So just as Brian said, I am Felicia Kilgore. I am with the South Carolina Housing Finance and Development Authority, which is a mouthful. So we shortened it and we call ourselves SE Housing. A lot of folks confuse us with the Columbia Housing Authority, which is in Columbia. They actually serves the Columbia market. But our agency, we are a state government agency, we serve the entire state. Okay, so we provide assistance, funding to develop and build, create and rehab. Affordable housing throughout the entire state. So one of our missions, well, one of the programs that we use to support that particular mission is administering the South Carolina Housing Trust Fund Program. And a lot of our programs are supported by federal dollars, state dollars, of course, we get tax. Tax issues, bonds, and we also use multifamily bonds to support our programs and develop and create affordable housing. So the funding that we receive to support the South Carolina Housing Trust Fund, it comes directly from the state. So if you recall purchasing your home, I'm sure a lot of you guys have actually purchased a house along the way. So I can guarantee you that you pay a, a D-stamped tax fee as part of your closing costs. So that money goes directly to the state. And so based on those dollars, we receive a percentage of that. So the governor has awarded us back in 1992 to administer this program with the, with the dollars that we receive. From the collection of the D-tax stamp fee. So that's what we use to support the home repair program. Not only we support the home repair program, we also have what we call a group home program to support the mentally challenged individuals, provide housing opportunities for those. We also have the supportive housing, which also provides housing opportunities for not only mental challenge as well as folks that are. That have experienced substance abuse or folks are transitioning from foster care, transitioning out of foster care. And they need to, need to go to the next level to develop themselves so they can live independently. And then, of course, we have the, the rental housing program and we refer to it as the Small Rental Development Program, which is designed for. Larger entities, larger nonprofit organizations to build, create, rehab affordable housing units. So you hear me talk about affordable housing units? So basically what that means is supporting the funding source that we use to support those types of developments. It is designed for individuals and families where their income falls within 5% of the AMI. Okay, so and it varies from county to county. For, I did kind of pull some numbers, what it is, what it looks like for Fairfield. Because I know automatically what it is for Richland County, but for Fairfield. A single person living in a home that needs some assistance, the maximum income is 25,000 to 50,000. Okay, if their family grows, if so, it's a family of four in Fairfield. The maximum total household income is $36,050 to receive assistance, okay? Of course, it'll, it'll, it'll vary a little differently for Chester, which is surrounding, and then, of course, for Lancaster. For Chester County, it's a little bit lower, the guidelines are a little bit lower for Chester County. But they're a little bit higher for Lancaster, just based on the dynamics of each county. Also got a little snapshot in my program too, that you guys can use to share with your constituents. And you can kind of keep in the back pocket, so to speak, of the program that we have that provide assistance for homeowners, okay?
I did not, no ma'am, I didn't get it.
So what we do is we provide, as of today, up to $10,000 worth of needed repairs. And the type of repairs that we're assisting with, there's repairs that relates to the outside of the home, exterior of the house. So we can provide assistance in replacing their roofs, installing a new heating and air unit. We also provide windows and doors, ramps and rails. We can repair or replace their septic tank, water heaters, things like that. We also repair any deteriorated boards on the outside of the home and we can wrap those boards with vinyl siding. That way it'll assist the homeowners in terms of having not to repaint, keep painting their homes as well. We are making some, some nice program changes to what we have today, based on what we have today, which is $10,000. We're going through some major changes with this program. I think you guys will be excited once we have fine to on how we're going to roll it out. We, we, we put the proposed changes out for public comments, probably about three weeks ago. We got a lot of good feedback. The way we have presented it out, we're going to engage up to $30,000 into a homeowner's home. Still working on the outside of the house, but the feedback we did receive that they would like for us to get more involved in inside work. Such as repairing the floors, the bathroom outfits, things like that. We do get calls for those types of repair needs. The only difference though, when you're working on the inside, we do have to take into account the age of the homes. Homes built before 1978. Now, there may be some lead-based paint issues that we may have to address or consider. So we want to ensure, once we roll out a program that's going to address the inside of the home, that we have enough funds set aside to address the lead-based paint. Which ultimately drive the cost of the project up. So we want to address not only those costs, but also still complete those repairs. Okay, so we hopefully will have everything fine tuned with that on the next, next month or so. But as of today, we still providing $10,000 worth of needed repairs. Based on the roof replacement, HVAC system, windows, doors, ramps and rails, things like that. Okay. So how, if you have a homeowner that needs some assistance, how they would apply? Not necessarily directly to us, because we kind of serve like the bank, but, but we, what we do is we work with nonprofit organizations. And I think we have like 42 on our list that we have been working with for a number of years. So your homeowner will actually contact one of our nonprofit organizations and apply directly with them. Okay. We have two that actually serves this area up here. One is called I-58. The contact person for is Leslie, Leslie Breakfield, she's based out of Chester, but she also serves Fairfield. I have a listing of those of our nonprofits too. We have all this information on our website, let me give you the phone number though. I see you guys writing some information down. So the contact phone number for I-58, Ms. Leslie Breakfield, her contact phone number is. The other organization that serves Fairfield is called South Carolina Uplift. South Carolina Uplift Community Outreach is the complete name. Mr. Kevin Wimberly. Kevin Wimberly. He is based out of Columbia, but he also serves Fairfield. His contact phone number is 803-691-4742. So in terms of homeowners, I did, I did say homeowner, so they do have to be on the deed. They have to show documentation, they have ownership of the property. A lot of times we get requests for properties that been willed over, turned over from their parents. It's now in the ownership of the siblings, but the title have not been transferred over to the person that's actually living in the home. So that has to be cleared and straightened out. Their name have to be on the deed and they have to show documentation, they do have some ownership of the property. We also ask for income documentation, so they can't hide that from us, we will ask for that documentation. We also ask for bank statements, okay, just to make sure that they still meet the income guidelines. As well as the liquid assets guidelines as well, okay? So that makes sure that, that we are serving the folks that we are intended to serve, okay? But however, once they contact the nonprofit, they will go over those, those guidelines. They have contractors that they've been working with for a number of years. They are licensed bonded, they have the workers' compensation and the general liability. Okay, so we don't divvy in terms of the expectation from the contractor, they have to be licensed and bonded. General liability up to a million dollars, worst compensation, all those good things before they can start moving forward and working on the homeowner's homes. We want to ensure that they can provide the one-year workmanship. One-year warranty towards the workmanship when they work on those houses. We will make sure that the houses are done complete and up into codes. We do have our inspector on staff that checks behind the contractors to ensure that those jobs are done correctly and complete and closed out. So before they actually move forward to start working on those homes, our inspector comes out to look at the house. Make sure the house is, is in a. In a state where it will sustain the repairs that they're asking for. We've had instances where the house need more work than what we can accommodate. Sometimes we'll try to reach out to other funding sources or other organizations that will also can couple with our program to provide that additional assistance. In this area, I have referred a lot of folks over to the USDA Rural Program, but they have also been able to tap into those. Along with our program to get the additional assistance that they need in terms of the repairs. One of the main things that we have been advocating for, for this particular area here in Fairfield is for nonprofit organizations. We would like to find a nonprofit organization that is actually stationed and operating in Fairfield. That way we would know that they can, Fairfield will get the service and the needs that they can possibly get by having an organization stationed, operating, located here in Fairfield. So if you know of any nonprofit organization that would like to get involved in housing, please refer them over to us. We will train them. There are a few expectations that they have got to meet though, because we want to ensure that they are stable. Organization have the wherewithal to manage the home repair program and have the wherewithal to deal with their homeowners, okay? So there are a few guidelines that we will ask for, they have to be in, in business, operated for at least a year. They would like to have, for them to have a mission statement as a part of their bylaws that they're willing. And is planning to work in the affordable housing industry to serve low-income families. We do look for capacity in terms of staff. We want them to have a designated person to work the program. As their go-to person for homeowners to call. As our go-to person to manage and oversee those construction projects. So there we, there'll be the one that we were trained and worked closely, closely with. We also will help them find and vet their contractors, we'll give them some guidelines in terms of trying to find licensed bonded. Certified contractors to work on those projects, because it's important that they find someone, establish a relationship with those contractors. So once they establish a relationship, it make the job and the process go much easier for them and the homeowner. So we have staff that actually will train and they'll, you know, work with them hand in hand, along with our inspector who actually oversees these construction projects as well, to get them up to speed and trained with that. Now, when I say capacity, we also look at in terms of the nonprofit where they have liquid capacity, you know, when it comes to working with construction, it can get pretty hairy sometimes. You know, you can open up that roof and start replacing, next thing you know, you're seeing some termite up there that are going all the way up to the roof, which is going to require some additional. Repairs that we never didn't see from the upfront when we did the inspection. So you want that, make sure that that nonprofit is stable, they did have some funds set aside to address major issues like that from the very beginning before we get involved. And so before we can actually get up there to check it out. We want them to be able to take care of those issues, but of course, we will reimburse them, but we want them to be prepared to address issues like that. So those are some of the things that we look for, liquid assets, $10,000 that we ask that they have on, on hand. To qualify themselves as an approved nonprofit. And then, of course, we want to have a, a office set aside to where they can protect those files for the homeowners, because you'll be collecting some confidential information. Make sure you have the security measures in place to protect those files and the homeowners. So that if anything comes up, you have everything secured, okay? So that's pretty much in a nutshell in terms of the home repair. Now, me and Mr. Bell had talked about what can be offered, what is offered for rental. For rental units, okay? So we talked about in great lengths, the Small Rental Development Program, which is what a lot of our larger scales, nonprofit and developers participate in a lot of times to develop some. Multifamily units, multifamily units, starting out at least four, all which about 35. So if you know of any organization that'd like to develop some new low, low-income affordable housing up here. Have them to contact us, so we can kind of go through the process to get them prepared to where they can apply for funding for that. We have various different sources that actually goes in that program for the small rental, it's not just the Housing Trust Fund, we also have National Housing Trust Fund to go in there, which is federal dollars comes from HUD. Along with the Home Investment Partnership Funds also comes from HUD. Okay, a lot of times it gives us the flexibility to be able to fund the entire project for the most part, except for some of the small costs. So they do have to have some funds set aside to help cover some of the soft costs of those types of projects. And of course, a management system in place to manage those units. Okay? Any questions? Kind of go over that information fairly quickly. Please refer to our website to stay abreast of the changes and the updates, particularly as it relates to the home repair program. Like I mentioned, we are going through a revamping of it, so we'll hopefully to be able to provide more assistance, more investment into the homeowner's home. It is set up as a grant, which is huge in terms of providing assistance for low-income families to get, help them stay and maintain in their houses safely. So please continue to watch our website, which is SE Housing website and for these, those new updates.
Does this include liens, liens on the property owner's property? If they get a grant from you?
When you, when you mention liens. I'm, I'm, I'm going to position it this way, we do place a soft lien on the property. For, for any projects that we're investing over $15,000. Okay, there is a 20-year restricted covenant that is placed, it is forgivable. But yes, we do place that, that's a very good question. We've been asked many times, what if the homeowner doesn't last or doesn't live as long as 20 years, what happens to the property? What happens to the property? Long as the property stays in the homeowner's home, um, name, or if it is transferred to a family member's name, longest we can verify that they are low-income and will be utilizing that property as their primary residence, they don't have to pay the funds back, it just stay there until it's completely forgiven and was resolved. If there has been an additional lien, uh, from the Housing Trust Fund from previous years that they may have came through and received some assistance, we will review that. But if based on what was, uh, was given to them at the time, they're eligible to come back for additional funding, uh, and the restricted covenant that may have been there in previous years, it'll just remain.
Any other questions from council? Again, um, thank you very much, um, um, for coming and, and sharing this information with us and, um,
You're welcome.
And, um,
I thought I had more questions than that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, um, we have a, a request for council to authorize, uh, receiving and expending some grant funds. And I'll give y'all a, a summary of that. Um, sorry for this, this kind of came to us late in the week, last week, but we feel like it's very good and very important, so wanted to get that, this before y'all tonight. Um, the Grants Department has been awarded two CARES Act Community Development Block Grants that require no match on the county's behalf. One grant focuses on food access and food shortages, while the other supports air purification systems in our county schools. The first grant, Public Services, expands the Meals on Wheels Program from five days to seven days, provides emergency meals for our senior residents and allows Fairfield Forward to purchase coolers to store fresh fruits and vegetables for their food share program throughout the county. The first two programs, we will do in conjunction with Fairfield and Newbury County Councils on Aging to provide these services to both counties. We've been awarded $339,800, and it comes out to 169,900 per county for both Meals on Wheels and the emergency meals. We've also been awarded $66,000 to purchase the coolers for Fairfield County. The second grant, Public Facilities, allows the Fairfield County School System to purchase air purification systems for every school. The air purification systems attach to HVAC units and kill COVID flu and other viruses and bacteria. This allows our students, faculty and staff to stay healthy, um, while limiting time away from the classroom. Uh, we've been awarded $355,000 to attach nine hundred systems to HVAC units. Because of the ongoing public health threat of the pandemic and the rapid spread of different variants now with COVID, it's extremely important these projects are implemented as soon as possible. The Grants Department is therefore requesting council's authorization, um, to, excuse me, I lost my place, to proceed with procuring the required goods and services for these projects under the county's emergency procurement provisions, and allow this request to serve as approval for goods over $25,000. Um, all expenditures will be a hundred percent reimbursable from the grant, and these funds are currently available for use. All procurement actions will comply with all federal and state procurement requirements, and our request for these emergency, emergency procurement provisions will only apply to these two grants. Approval of our request will allow us to implement these emergency meals and air purification systems as quickly as possible.
Can, can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, and, and any other discussion?
I got a question, is that going to require the, um, council on aging employees to work extra days on the weekend for seven days? How does that, how does that work?
I'm not sure on that, all, all the county is just basically a pass through for supplies, the way I understand it. Um, I, I'm not sure on that.
Just, um, to look at the way that it's worked in other communities is that on Friday, they deliver meals for the weekend as well.
Any other questions? All in favor, let it be known by I.
I.
Pose's name. At the record show, approved.
Mr. Bell, I do have one more item, um, Mr. Gene Stevens from the Chamber of Commerce is with us, and he's gonna give a brief update on the Rock Around the Clock.
Good evening, uh, thank y'all for allowing me to come up here tonight, council, uh, Mr. Calder. I called him this afternoon to see if we could possibly, uh, just give y'all some information. Um, the Rock Around the Clock Festival is, uh, you know, it's the first weekend in October. Um, with the rise in COVID and different things, uh, some concerns, we have, um, I will tell you this, a couple of years ago, when I first started, uh, the, the Rock Around the Clock was kind of run by one person. Um, one of my first acts honestly was to change that, I wanted input from, uh, county, I want input from town, I want input from our board, uh, cause we really didn't do that. Um, so we have discussed it, uh, amongst our board, we have discussed it, uh, with the town of Winsboro, and there are some concerns as far as, I'll be honest with you, just from town of Winsboro with their stance, they're concerned about employees being, uh, healthy, safe, if, I think you all know that their police staff just was just out, uh, with a bunch of officers and things like that, um, even providing the power services, utility services that go with an event like this. Um, and so basically, as an organization, uh, we have decided this year to cancel Rock Around the Clock, um, and move it for next year. And, uh, you know, we fully support that. I will say, one of the other things is the, uh, within our budget, there's an actual sponsorship for Rock Around the Clock. Um, and I just want, uh, if y'all want us to refund it, we can do that, or if you want us to just hold it over till next year, we can do that. Uh, y'all just kind of let me know, uh, what you want to do as far as that goes. And, um, so I just want to give you all an update on that, so. Do you have any question?
Mr. Paul.
When you say, um, "we," are, are you referring to, excuse me, town of Winsboro? Are you referring to the Fairfield County Chamber Board? Or are you referring to both groups?
Both, everybody.
The town, the town of Winsboro voted it down?
Uh, wasn't technically a vote, but their stance is that, uh, they would have trouble providing the employees to work it. Um, there are concerns as far as liability goes and things like that. Um, so there, there wasn't an actual vote, but there was a consensus among the, um, the council members, and it'll be in the minutes, that they all, uh, said that they wanted it canceled.
Now, I know you work for the chamber,
Mm-hmm.
Um, but do you, do you know if the town of Winsboro is going to cancel any other events that's located in the city of Winsboro?
So the town, uh, the town events, yes, uh, actually, so there's some things that, and you and I talked about this, the big grab. Um, and I'll be honest, the, the timing of this is kind of bad, just to explain it to you, you know, cause, um, uh, Mr. Paulie asked me about, you know, the big grab going on, things like that. I, I'll be honest with y'all, if, if the chamber come out three years, three months ago and said the big grab was canceled, big grab still happens. Um, it's just, we can't stop that. It's a community event now, people are gonna show up Labor Day, they're gonna show up to sell, they're gonna show up to buy. There's nothing we can do about that. Um, and I know we've talked about the town of Winsboro shutting it down, but it's on private property, there's really nothing they could do. Um, you know, the people that sell, you can't really sma-stop it. Um, but as far as technically for the town of Winsboro, the only, uh, we also discussed the food truck wars that's happened. But honestly, the town of Winsboro, that's not their, uh, jurisdiction, the, that actually occurs in the county parking lot. Um, and I'll be honest, I, if the way we've done that is, uh, Ms. Johnson, before she left, uh, she gave us permission to use that, and every time we've done that, I've actually reached out to Mr. Calder and see if it's okay if we put it there. Uh, again, that's another thing that if, if, if we cancel, if we move it out of downtown, it's still gonna happen. Um, they're gonna move it to the bypass, and they're gonna move it actually out of town limits, where they do it's out of town limits, uh, they'll put it in county property, um, it's not county property, but you know, it's in the county lines. Um, but they'll, they'll move it, but I, the reason we moved it down there, like I said, it's gonna happen regardless. I wanted it to benefit our, um, merchants and our businesses downtown, cause we don't, there is food on the bypass, but there's really not many food options in downtown Winsboro, uh, which kind of limits the number of people that can come down and the experience of Winsboro. So our, our merchants have received a huge boost, um, every time there's a food wars down there. Um, and it's just a, a group that does that, and I, all I did was ask them if they would move it down there. Um, if, if the county decided that don't want them to be in the parking lot anymore, I, I would just have to tell them to have to move it to their other location, but it'll still happen. Um, as far as the town goes, the next town event would be Pumpkin Fest. Um, I told the town council the other night, I said, uh, we can hold off because, um, I'll be honest, we, we can put together events pretty quickly. Uh, and I told them we can hold off for a couple of weeks, but ultimately, they're gonna have to make a decision on that, cause that's a straight town event. Um, that, and they will basically do a vote on that probably at their next meeting next week, on whether to move forward Pumpkin Fest. Um, and from there, it's just gonna be, um, uh, you know, contingent. So depending on where we are as a nation, I'll be honest, as a state, as a county, uh, that will be contingent, because the, then the next type of things you're talking about are, um, you're getting into, um, uh, like shop mall, things like that that benefit the, the merchants. Um, you have your, like Christmas parade and stuff like that. And, um, I'll be honest with you, like last year, I did everything I could to get the first Christmas parade approved. Uh, but I went to the Department of Commerce, like you had, you were supposed to apply for it. Lady told me, she said, if you can require masks in downtown, if you change your answer on that, we'll approve it. I went to the, all the people in charge, and I said, can we do it? And they said, no, technically not with our ordinances and stuff like that, we couldn't. So, uh, we had to cancel that, but again, we, we've done everything we can to try to facilitate, um, try to get back to normal, but I'll be honest, this, at, at this point in time, the, uh, the group that made the decision thinks it's best that we don't have Rock Around the Clock this year. And, um, and yeah, as far as, as far as other events, we're, it, that's, the ones that the town controls, absolutely. Um, that, like I said, the next one's Pumpkin Fest, well, um, would, it's probably gonna end up being canceled, I'll just tell you probably, uh, just because of the concerns, uh, that you have with children, especially with them getting the variant now and, uh, more and more exposure. And that's just, you know. You have any other questions?
Um, I got, I got a, um, comment since you, um, since you mentioned the big grab. Um, one of the things, um, I was talking to some of the vendors, and they was telling me that they had people from Mississippi, Tennessee, all over, a lot of places, um, and they were, the guy, um, when I was talking to him, one of the things he said is that, um, they don't know how you, how we do all the advertisement, but whatever you doing for the big grab, um, it really, um, attract a lot of people from a lot of different places, so I thought that was really good.
You know, I, um, a, a lot of, of local media feel sorry for us, as far as like, you know, radio stations and TV stations, they'll, um, give us some free, um, some free airtime, like WLTX, you know, Daniel Bonds is from here. Um, anytime we have something coming up, I say Daniel's, anyway you can get us some exposure, and, uh, they were, they were nice, they came and did some, uh, they did a story on it, but they also did a story that day. Um, uh, we also do some other, we've expanded our advertising up into the Rock Hill Charlotte area, um, this year. And I'll be honest, at this event, a, again, it, there, there's a Facebook page for the big grab, there's eleven thousand followers on the Facebook page. This event markets itself, it's gotten so big, people planning their vacations around it. I talked to a couple from Pennsylvania that literally, they planned their vacation for this event. Um, they actually, it text, uh, sent me a message, a direct message, probably about two weeks before, making sure it was still on, because they wanted to make sure they didn't come out. Again, it's, that's one of those things that it's just gonna happen. Uh, the weekend after Labor Day, people are gonna show up to sell, because people are gonna show up to buy. Um, and they're planning their vacations, and it's great for our county. Um, I, I know some people don't like it, cause of the traffic and things like that, a, and that happens. Uh, but I'll be honest, it gives great exposure for our county. Some of the businesses, their biggest days of the year are that Friday and Saturday. Uh, especially the small businesses, the merchants and stuff like that. Uh, one of the things they did this year was actually bring tables out, bring stuff out on the sidewalk, so people would come in. They made a killing, um, it just benefited them, especially with this time of COVID. You know, you've had some, some issues with small businesses making revenue, so.
Yes, sir, and as you mentioned, the COVID, the, um, Rock, Rock Around the Clock, um, Mr. Manmikan did call me to let me know he had been canceled.
Yeah, and we, we haven't officially, uh, put a statement out yet, but, uh, am tonight. Um, I wanted to make sure everything was, you know, kind of in order. Uh, everybody was contacted, uh, about the ones, you know, I was trying to get it out, they got a lot, out a little bit faster than I wanted to, but it's okay. We, um, we, we're gonna put out an official statement tonight and, um, look to do, actually, there's some things that we're trying to do a little bit bigger and better. But it, again, uh, there is a sponsorship, y'all just let me know, um, if you want that just refunded, or if you just want to carry it over till next year. And, um, I'll, I'll just, yeah. Any other questions? And i-if y'all want to, y'all could tell Mr. Calder, and he can get back to me and give me an answer on that.
We'll discuss it later.
Okay, that'll work, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Calder. Down to the collective council report, non, um, county council time.
Mr. Gibb. Yeah, um, in our future decision-making, I would hope that we would take some serious consideration in that our Economic Development Director, Mr. Ty Davenport, needs a permanent office, uh, and not an open space in the middle of a building. He hosts and entertains potential new customers, and he has to, uh, bring them and sit them down in the middle of this building. Um, and it doesn't look good for Fairfield County. Uh, he works hard for Fairfield County, and I think that he needs to be rewarded with a permanent office. Um, and also, I think that we should also look at giving him his auto allowance back, uh, so he can do the job. I mean, this man worked, I, I can't say it enough how hard he works for Fairfield County and, and, and he, he needs an office.
Thank you, Mr. Gibb. Mr. Carter.
I want to start off by saying that on April the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, I sent a email to Chairman Moses Bell and copied all other council members. In this email, I asked the chairman to put on the next agenda, which would be tonight, the request that the sheriff made in the budget for a new evidence officer. I also requested that the fire inspector job also be put on the agenda, that we move it from a part-time position to a full-time position. There has also been a request made that we consider hazard pay for all of our first responders, as well as some others. I see that's not on, that's not on the agenda to discuss as well. I hope council members know that we are not in compliance with the fire service. For some reason, Mr. Bell chooses not to put on the agenda what some council members are asking for, but will put on the agenda other council members' requests. In closing, I want to say that some council members only do things to benefit themselves and not what's best for the county. Maybe Chairman Bell missed putting these things on the agenda, because he was pressing the attorneys from the Dominion Settlement to have a celebratory steak dinner at Hall's Chop House in Columbia, where he could get himself a free steak. This steak dinner involved everyone that was involved in the negotiation for the settlement, but he was the only council member present. I guess we all now see what has been going on.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any other council members?
I'd just like to make a comment about the Grants Department. I'd like to certainly thank them for their fine work in, uh, securing grants for, um, food access and for the, uh, public facility air filtration. I think it's really great to, um, congratulate them on their wonderful efforts.
Thank you.
And, and, and Mr. Carter, um, I concur, um, with the comments of Ms. Green. One of the things, um, um, I asked the, um, uh, Ms. Roberts to do, is place a copy of, of our bylaws on, on each councilman desk. Um, we will not do anything with that tonight, other than, um, I want to make sure, that I want all of you all to review it, because there are items in here that, that conflicts with state law. And, and one of the things we need to do is go ahead and try to, um, work on the bylaws. So what, one of the things I'm, I'm asking you all to do is, um, it just, is go through it and read it. And if you got any, um, um, any, uh, I guess, a traction addition, um, to the bylaws, um, please, um, forward those to me, so as we begin to look at it, um, we can have these, um, bylaws changed and ratified to make sure they're in, they're in, they're what we want to do, but also, um, it fits state law. Again, um, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Again, I wanna thank you all for being here tonight. One of the things we did here tonight is we had a lot of presentation about a lot of people, about a lot of services that's offered by the state and others to help us, help us in a way that we can grow and develop ourselves. And so again, I wanna thank those persons who came, took their time and to be able to do this for us. This was, this was significant. And we need to continue to bring people in so we can let our, let our county and our citizens know about the services that being offered to them and that's out that they, that they might be able to take advantage of. Again, I wanna thank you for all of that and so, and I really do appreciate it. One of the things I'm doing is I'm sort of preparing a decision-making framework. And what I do is I present that to you all another time so we can look at how we make decisions, especially about projects and how we go, how we go forward. If no other council person have anything for anything, now it's time to go into executive session. Can we get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair? I'd like to ask, even though you have this printed, the law requires that you announce after the vote the topics that you will discuss.
Right.
And I would like for you to include this topic I received at 3:15 this afternoon. A legal update to discuss with the council, the status of the case of Fairfield County versus Alliance Wiley Eastern at all. That's pending litigation, you will take no action. I just need to make you aware of the contents of this email I received at 3:15.
Yes, sir. Again, can we get a motion to go into executive session?
Can I ask a question about that?
You wanna get the question after you make, go through the motion. Can we get a motion? You gonna get a second?
Second.
Okay. Item A, legal update regarding the status of pending hospital dead pursuant to South Carolina Code. B, legal update regarding the proposed hospital and former property sale pursuant to South Carolina Code. C, legal update potential implication of the recent decision in the Norfolk Southern litigation pursuant to South Carolina Code. Personnel matter regarding county administrative search update pursuant to South Carolina Code. Legal update status versus the lines and.
Fairfield County versus Alliance Wiley Eastern at all.
Okay. Okay, any discussion, Mr. Calderon?
I withdraw my question, I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Close is an A. That's the record show six zero.
Can we get a motion to come out of the executive session?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, there's no action taken in executive session. Um, are you ready to vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose's? Nay. Okay. Is there anything else before council?
Council, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, as a ward accept the, uh, agreement with the former, with the hospital board on the debt owed to the county.
So move.
It's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? Um, one of the things, Mr. Call, um, one of the question that was asked, I see we got, um, forgive me, I don't know the last name, the financial director for the hospital.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell. Um, I want to be able to ask him a question. Um, one of the things, um, is, um, there was a question, are you forgiving any of the, um, debt of any of the people that owed money to the hospital?
You mind going to the mic, Mr. Mitchell?
As far as patient accounts receivable, uh, during the period of the hospital as an operation, uh, we wrote off $7 million a year in patient debt.
Okay, but is that, does that answer your question? Mr. Robinson, is that?
No, sir, but go ahead.
Just go ahead. Okay, um, any other, any other questions? Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, it's nay?
Nay.
So let the record show there's, um, one, two, five, one.
Am I done here, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
Supposed to know German.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adjournment, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose's nay?
Nay.
I understand that.
You were rootin' for the Ravens, you didn't say a word, did you? You were rootin' for the Ravens, you didn't say a word, and he's talkin' about America's team.
I just called.